Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, June 7th, 2021. This is the Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and in the Republic of America, one nation, the dry, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Surely have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present and you have a question.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Board, you'll see in front of you the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda as presented? Seeing no questions or comments, can we entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. Couple of items I want to discuss under Mayor's remarks this evening is to ask the board for unanimous approval to allow a city employee or official plus one guest complimentary passes to our amphitheater shows. I propose we grant to all city employees and city officials to be given an employee plus one guest access to each amphitheater event. This is similar to what other municipalities and paramunicipalities and school districts do. Overall, obviously the cost will be minimal, and I believe that it will increase morale and attendance at our events. I think it will be extremely positive for the community to see our employees out at the amphitheater. Any questions or concerns from the board on this request?
I'll be round. I thought we already did.
That is exactly what I told him.
Elected officials have that privilege currently.
I thought City Hall had it.
And the staff does not. So if we're not comfortable with approving this, then I would recommend that we remove it for elected officials as well.
Yeah, no, I'm.
I think it's a great idea for everybody.
Thought it was already in place.
Yeah, me too. When I saw it, I was shocked. I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion that employees, city officials, plus one guest to the amphitheater passes and no charge.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you for your support on that board. Next item under Mayor's remarks is if you were not at the chamber meeting last week or had not found out through social media, I'm excited that the Carney Chamber of Commerce will be helping us open our grand opening of the Carney Lions Memorial Park and Splash Pad Friday, June 18th at 9:30 in the morning. We'll have a ribbon cutting at 9:30. I'll have a message. We'll have donors and other residents of the city in attendance, and then it will open at 10:00 AM. And myself and anybody else from the board that would like to be involved, we've been challenged by the Parks Department to be the first ones to have the big bucket, dump it on the site. I may have been specifically called out individually, but I know the Parks Department meant the whole board.
I don't think I'm gonna be able to make it that great.
I'm up for the challenge, and if you'd like to join me, 9:30, Friday, June 18th. And Mr. Jim Dickerson at our amazing hometown radio station, 102.7 KPGZ, is offered to pay for my dry cleaning. So I'll just say he'll pay for yours, too. So come join us Friday, June 18th at 9:30. And that concludes my Mayor's remarks. We'll move on to the Administrator's report.
You have to take your glasses off for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Enclosed in foray are street bids that we've taken for concrete cut and patch and asphalt cut and patch and also asphalt overlay. I mentioned that I, something about a pressure pavement proposal, which is not included in the United's approval. The proposed resolution would authorize the contract to be issued to McConlon Associates who are a little bitter on all of the items. I think they were the only bidder on the concrete.
That's correct.
However, that would recommend that collectively, that total is $352,892.69. We are also authorizing up to $390,000 total to do add-ons that we typically run onto as we're doing the work. So with that, I'd like to request that the board make a motion to approve the resolution that's enclosed.
So overall, we're still about $47,000 below our budget.
But what about this pressure pavement proposal?
The pressure pavement can cost as much as $200,000 depending, we can't get them to town for less than $100,000. Liberty was working with them to, on a number of $5.10 a square yard. This is a material that we've been anxious to test, but since Liberty has fallen through, I don't know where we are about getting, they're from the Springfield area, and I don't know about getting them up here. But anyway, there are other cities that are interested, so we're going to discuss this further and find out what's going on and if we can get on their schedule and tell you how much work we'd like to do. On that proposal, we would really like to seal all of Watson Drive and two others, Washington Street.
And Cedarwood Parkway.
Cedarwood Parkway. So it's touted as a 10-year sealer, and we would certainly like to try and to be able to get by that way. And we definitely want to make sure our seal gets put on the Watson Drive because that is a big investment we want to protect. So.
Any other questions from the board?
Is this a black sealer or?
It's actually injectable. It's injected on the pavement like at 60 and 5.
Okay.
So it goes deep into all the cracks, even the minuscule cracks that you really can crack seal.
Okay.
It's supposed to stop the UV from deteriorating.
The pictures I saw in color were more of a brownish color to it.
Yeah, it's kind of a different stuff.
We don't know. We're gonna look into it more, but we're interested.
Okay.
We think it's, we think it's a better thing than Flurry Seal, although we, you know, we still believe in Flurry Seal. So, Mr. Mayor.
You can read that proposal or respond to that.
A resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign the 2021 road repairs contract list.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also make a brief report on the public contract negotiations. We've proposed nine years of a 10-year contract with Republic. The city's residential trash rates are some of the most competitive in the metro area and are lower than our neighboring Excelsior Springs and Liberty, both of which you contract with Republic. Enclosed is a history that shows that we've started out with 2,690 customers in July of 2012. We've grown 30%, adding 800 customers to almost 3,500 billed in June of 2021. And so we have a contract to demonstrate to them that shows growth, and I think that that should be attractive to any hauler. One of the significant things that's in that report is that we now have over 550 customers that are paying for at least one extra cart. And as opposed to Liberty and Excelsior Springs, our cart charge is very inexpensive. It's only $2.73. So that's what, if we get into a competitive bid, it's going to be difficult to try to match our little bit of complication that we have with our, with our carts. And those customers will be significantly impacted. If they were like Excelsior Springs, I think their second cart is, well, just a.
$14.
$14.
Does that per month though?
So anyway, we think it's valuable to give Republic an opportunity to negotiate with us. They've asked for the opportunity, and I'd like to request that they submit a proposal so we can form our committee that we have been planning on doing and set out and visit with them and find out quickly if we're going to be able to negotiate or if we need to go to the competitive market, we need to get that done. We ought to have that done by the fall because it takes a while for everybody to order their carts if we were to actually switch suppliers. I also have enclosed in the agenda packet, e-waste recycling fees. They are essentially a dollar-for-dollar recovery amount and for our recyclables. And I think I'm going to get to it. And what people are going to be upset with, I think, is the smoke detectors. It costs more to dispose of a smoke detector than it does to buy one. That costs $10, right? Well, to dispose of one, it costs the city of Carney 20. We can't give that service away for free. And why is that, it's a, you know, it's got radiation in it or uranium or something, something that they can't dispose of easily. So that's one item that you're going to probably hear some beefs about, and it is exactly what we're getting charged. Well, on this latest bill, we were charged $20 per smoke detector to turn them in. And so what's going to happen to those smoke detectors when you want to responsibly dispose it? Well, you know, you know. And so it's a problem, but we've, we've got to be able to, you know, somebody's got to figure out how to get this stuff recouped. Maybe the EPA will come up with some financing for that, you know?
God, that's great.
Anyway, I guess I'm not really, I'm just wanting you guys to know that I'd like to be doing that if there's any objections. And I also have Ryan Marcot, who would like to go over briefly the 2021 amphitheater schedule. And if you're there, Ryan, it's your turn.
Thank you very much, board. We're excited about the amphitheater schedule. We kind of gave everyone a sneak preview of it at the chamber meeting last week. So I'll hop right into it. Our Friday, July 2nd fireworks celebration at Jesse James Park, it's going to be the normal fireworks celebration experience, and we're going to have the inflatables, we're going to have the fireworks, and we're going to have a show, a freak show from Noe Palma. And so that will be an excellent fireworks show, and it'll be an excellent free concert beforehand. So moving right along, Saturday, August 7th, we have our Carney Country Showdown. It's our second one. We're excited about the event. We have Tate Stevens headlining, a group called Big Time Grain Company, Craig Scheller, local Craig Scheller, and also local Cody Vandero. So we have some local homegrown talent on that show, and we're really excited about it. It's going to be a really good time for everyone. Moving along, Saturday, August 21st, we have Classic Rock Head East is going to be there, and the special opener is going to be a group called The Goddesses of Rock. And this is a really unique show. They feature three front women who take turns singing the songs, and as the other ones are singing, the other two are in the back changing to look like Tina Turner or Janis Joplin or whoever's coming out next. So it's a really unique experience, and it's going to be a really fun show. Moving along, Saturday, August 28th, we have our Blues Fest. Our Blues Fest is back, and it's coming back strong this year. The old number fives are headlining, and for those of you that were at the 2019 Blues Fest, they absolutely stole the show and left Eric and myself, our jaws just agape with how amazing they were. And so they'll be headlining the show. The Reverend Jimmy Bratcher, kind of a classic, somewhat local blues talent, Taylor Smith, who I think is the best guitar player in Kansas City, and no one's proven me wrong yet, and Howard Mahan will be opening the show for us that evening. And it's, again, this is going to be a really fantastic show. So we're doing something a little different this year. We're actually extending it into September. So Saturday, September 25th, it's going to be the Party All Night Tour, and that is a Jason Aldean and Luke Bryan tribute. And I can actually share my screen here. I want to show you this because, yeah, thank you, David. I want to show you this because for those of you that know what Jason Aldean and Luke Bryan look like, these guys are Dead Ringers, and they sound exactly the same as well. This is going to be a really fun show for everybody. And again, that's going to be Saturday, September 25th. After that, the next Saturday is going to be our Oktoberfest. So it's going to be Saturday, October 2nd. It's going to be a really good time. The Brian McCarty Band will be out there again, and it's always a fantastic time when we do Oktoberfest. So I invite everyone to come out, and tickets are actually on sale now at carneyamphitheater.com. We did a software rollout over the weekend just to make sure there weren't any bugs because we didn't have a concert season last year. So tickets are on sale now, and we're going to go large and live with our advertising this week. So that is the Carney Amphitheater 2021 season, and on behalf of Eric and myself, we are very thankful and very proud to be back.
Thank you, Ryan. And Eric, you, you were going to explain the cabana and the shelter fees at the Splash Pad. And David, if you brought that up, it's going to be, it's going to be made big, or else you're not going to be able to read it. Are you there, Eric?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
At our last board meeting of the park board in May, we had a great discussion on how we should set the fees for our shelters and/or the cabanas that we have installed at the new renovated park. Shelter rentals for city residents will be $100 for a three-hour timeframe. And again, this is for city of Carney, city limit residents. The $150 fee will be for non-city limit residents. And we went ahead and set a specific timeframe to maximize the use of the shelters, being that the Splash Pad hours are from 10 until 8:00 PM. We decided to set the three-hour timeframe from 10 to 1, allow a half hour cleanup time for people to pick up their things, and the next group that might come in, time to set up for their event. So it'll be 10 to 1, 1:30 to 4:30, and then 5 to 8:00 PM. At 8:00 PM, the Carney Splash Pad will shut off at that time. We decided to do the same thing as far as timeline goes. Ryan and I discussed with the board, and they thought, you know, if we're going to have the shelter, let's keep everything the same with the cabanas, but it would just be a smaller fee. And the fees are $50 for a three-hour timeframe and $75 for a three-hour timeframe for the non-city residents. And this does include the Carney Band Shell as well. People can rent that. There is electricity over there. We know it's far further away from the actual playground and Splash Pad, but there's a little bit more shade over there, and they might want to just rent that for themselves or for a group of people for a day in the park. So we, when I sent this out, we did not know the, the event opening, but we are taking reservations now. They can call our direct lines downstairs at 903-4724 and 903-4730. And Ryan and I are taking the reservations where they pay at that same time that they reserve a shelter at Lions Park.
Hey, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Only question I have is, I understand probably Monday through Friday, this is going to be pretty easy to manage. What are we going to do about on the weekend of charging residents to reserve specific shelters and such? It would be my expectation as a renter that when I'd show up, the trash would be changed, the tables wiped off. How are we going to manage the logistics of that?
On a weekend, right now, we are doing the same thing for when we go out to do our shelters at the Jesse James Park, and we go out and we clean the bathrooms and things like that for our ballgames. We've talked with Ray. We'll probably have to go and pay him a little bit of overtime during the morning time to make sure that those bathrooms have plenty, you know, plenty of toilet tissue and things of that nature to get us through the entire day. And that'd be a Saturday, Sunday type event.
Okay. Yeah, I assumed you guys probably worked something on. I just wanted to make sure you had. I just would hate to start receiving calls at 1:30 on a Saturday because the second party has shown up and trash is overflowing, and they've left stuff all over the table, so.
Right. Each and every day, we're going to take those trash cans and get them dumped. And we have found confirmation, mid-July, the regular trash cans will be in. But so things will be cleaned and, and ready for the patrons as they come to visit their shelter. And we just hope that people respect the park and put their trash in the trash receptacles as well.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. My last item is, is that thanks to Donnie Smith, he helped to secure a $6,000 grant for new fluoride equipment plant, or equipment at the water plant. Encloses a, an agreement with the Department of, Missouri Department of Health to authorize acceptance of that, and I'd ask the board to make a motion to approve that. We have been treating fluoride as a community for many, many years, and this is an opportunity to, to update a little bit of equipment.
Great job on that. Great, Donnie. Can we entertain a motion to accept the funding?
I'll make that motion to accept the funding.
Oh, second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to public requests and public petitions.
Mr. Mayor, we have Andy Fox and his wife with us this evening. They've enclosed a memo from David Pavlich that explains a request from them to secure a temporary structure permit for his barbecue strings, which he would intend to operate at 102 West Lawrence, which is formerly the used car lot in North Innes Town, and conduct retail sales. So their presentation is included in the agenda packet, and I think they have some handouts and come to the podium and explain that. Also have Mr. James Rucker here, who's their real estate man. Thank you. Welcome here.
Thank you. Been with us for a long time, so.
Oh, is that right?
He's here tonight.
His son was on the land commission.
Yeah, yeah.
And we appreciate them seeing more closely to our eyes as what things ought to be worth rather than what the requests were made.
Think we have this in this packet?
It is, yes.
We can share screen if you want to do that.
Yes, it's okay.
Yeah, and my intent was not to go line by line on what is handed out, but more to kind of briefly cover what we're here to discuss tonight. And then obviously that's for you to take home and read, and also in the agenda packet as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for your time this evening. We are excited to be here. We, like I said, wanted to briefly discuss our intentions and then obviously answer any questions that we have. So as we stated, this, I'm Andy, my wife Nicole. We're the owners and operators of Cox and Fire Barbecue, which is, currently we're operating out of North Kansas City, and we've been there since July of 2020. So our operation is a bit unique in that we work from a, there's some pictures kind of.
Yeah, I could scroll, kind of scroll.
Yeah. So we work from what I would consider to be a semi-permanent to really a stationary mobile kitchen. And that, while it has wheels and you could move it, we're situated such that the trailer just stays there and we serve from a routine basis. We're paired with a brewery. That's kind of the second unique thing. So we kind of occupy a corner of their, of their lot. And so that's how we've been operating since July of last year. Earlier this year, the brewery announced that they're going to be moving locations. And so Nicole and I had to kind of make a decision. Do we move with them or do we try to stand up on our own and do our own thing? So we ultimately decided that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to go out and kind of look for something on our own. And we'd actually looked at another property here in Carney a few months ago, but just decided it wouldn't work for our business. And we were a bit disappointed in that just because we really wanted to find a location in and around Carney, a scenario that we've kind of had our eye on for a while. So one of our goals when we kind of decided to start our business is that we wanted to find an area that could grow, we can invest and develop with a growing community as well. So that's what kind of draw it drew us to Carney.
And that aligns with our values, just family focused, centered, small town. We've grown up in the Northland, so Carney is definitely, just seen it grow. Our family's growing. We want to grow our business here, too.
So yeah, at this point, that property didn't work out, but then we, you know, we just kind of kept our eyes out and we found, yeah, the vacant property just up the street here at 102 West Orange Street. And, you know, when we saw it, we knew that we had to try to make it work. So our intent is to relocate our, what I would consider our semi-permanent operations to that vacant property. To that end, we have made an offer to, to the landowners. They have accepted our offer. The final sale is contingent upon both the health department approval and obviously city approval. The health department has given me a verbal thumbs up. Actually, it's quite simple. I was kind of surprised how easy that was. They're like, yeah, they need to re-inspect things, but they, they gave me a verbal okay. As long as we pass the reinspection, we should be good to go. So our, another intent, or we intend to phase in operations from what we would, or what was considered a temporary structure to eventually, we'd love to have a permanent brick and mortar operation on that site. We know we need an adequate runway to get there. Hopefully, the information that's in that packet and what I've kind of discussed with you tonight will give you enough information to help make your decision there. And really, at this point, I'll kind of stop talking, and if there are questions, we're happy to address those at this time.
Thank you for the presentation and for being here this evening. Are there any questions from the board?
I do have some questions. What is the timeframe for these mobile units? I mean, are we talking five years down the road, 10 years down the road? How soon are you looking to get rid of the mobile units and having a brick and mortar?
Yeah, so right now, the best I can say, and TBD is not a great answer, but in that packet, we kind of have a phased plan. And we're working currently with an architecture firm in Liberty to try to help us make some of these decisions on when, when we can do this. So our, our goal would be, you know, not five years. I would say within two to three years max. But it's kind of, it's kind of dependent on, yeah, if the business grows the right way, then we can make those decisions. If it doesn't, then we'll have some.
Yeah. So what we know is based on the way the code is written, what we're probably going to get granted is a temporary use permit because it's an easily movable structure. Historically, I think you all have only granted six months on that. So we've already enlisted the help of an architecture firm to help us understand how can we get up to building code with the current mobile operations that we have. And a lot of that involves, which we're working on plans to submit at a later date, but basically that's phase two. And so it would be encasing the trailer. It's plumbing into the sewer, the electrical, as well as the gas. It's making sure that all of it's up to code from a building standpoint, not a temporary standpoint. So, and then adding fencing and things like that. Nice fencing, right? But for seating and things like that. So the goal is really phase two would be faster. And then phase three is full brick and mortar. And that is one of the reasons why we love this property so much is it gives us the ability to grow, again, as Carney grows and as our, as our operation grows. So phase two would likely be indoor seating with, or I'm sorry, phase three kind of A would be indoor seating. We'd still use the trailer, the service trailer, as a full commercial kitchen, and then eventually move out of that trailer to building the commercial kitchen within the building. So 3.2, if you will. So again, we're already working with architects to kind of design all of this out. What runway looks like, we don't know. You know, we've been in operation for a year. We've been COVIDed. We've seen really positive results so far. We have listed some of the accolades already. And so the goal is that we just continue to expand and grow, and as it grows, we dump everything back into it and. and build it into, again, the long-term.
Were you looking to put a tent up for seating?
Yeah, or some sort of a pavilion, more of a permanent thing that would provide some sort of a shelter. I could see that feasibly being done in the next year or so, so.
That's part of phase two. So, again, tent is probably, I hate the word trailer, I hate the word tent, right? Because I think from a visual perspective, that's not what we're trying to do. What we want is more of a permanent structured pavilion. Again, some fencing around it to enclose seating for everyone that would provide shelter for the elements. But then, also, again, working with the architect techs, looking at even beer and liquor licensing. We wouldn't go full liquor, but thinking long-term beer and wine sales, how do we do that with an outdoor seating structure? So, that's the things that we're already going through those codes and looking at. And we know that it will have to be a permanent structure in order to achieve those. But the goal is to do it right the first time, right? And not redo it later.
Any other questions from the board? If there are other questions from the board, we just need a simple majority approval from the board? Or do we have anything from staff to the board?
Yeah, is there, what is being asked to grant here?
Yeah.
What would be what?
What are we being asked to grant?
Asked to grant, well, temporary structure. So, the, having the trailers out on the property. There, you know, there's no new building that they're building at this point in time. So, they're asking for that temporary structure.
But instead of six months, perhaps a year?
That's what I think we're trying to understand. And I think historically, they haven't been granted for longer than six months. And then, the other thing that hasn't been requested ever is reapproval. And what is the window between reapproval, right? So, if we get six-month temporary use, then what? And so, we know this is kind of new for Carney. We did this with North Kansas City as well. So, we're kind of forging ahead with unpaved paths. So, looking for you guys to help us understand, if we get a temporary use permit, what exactly does that mean? And then, long-term, how do we either reapply as we're working towards phase two? And kind of the phase in-between.
So, I think it'd be very important, whatever the board would approve, for you to remain in good contact with our community development director, David Pavlich. And, you know, any approval consideration denied is just for that period. You know, and obviously, not that you're asking us to guarantee anything in the future, but, you know, we can't guarantee anything in the future. It appears that you guys have a good plan and will be good, responsible operators. Sounds like you're, you know, gonna make it nice and continue them for very. But just know, we can't guarantee anything past what we're gonna approve tonight. You know, who knows, you know, next year, you know, elections are yearly and then boards change, so we can't guarantee anything, you know, past what we had approved tonight. Do you have anything to add to that, David?
Well, you know, typically, it's been a six-month period. And that was for, if a few board members might remember, the Plygem office trailer, that was a six-month period. The Call Valley landscaping, theirs is always six months, but they are usually a little shorter than that. And then, the ice cream, or the slush places in the summer. So, we know those are all, all those places have always had a kind of an end timeline that they were aware of. I'm sorry?
What'd we do on silers?
Uh, sil, I don't.
What I thought was a year.
I don't remember, I didn't pull that one up. Now, that was, that was done in March, I believe.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
I'm sorry, that's okay.
Have we ever denied anything over six months? Anything from six months?
I don't recall any. I don't recall any. The board, I believe, has always, has generally approved applications for the temporary structures.
So, it is possible for us to do a one-year one?
The code doesn't have a timeline at the end.
Okay.
So, that's, that's more of a policy that the board's had was. And probably, I believe, in general, you know, most of those have been a short time known. This, you know, during the summer, you don't, you don't, you don't serve the slush or the, I can't remember the name. I just call them flushies. We call them flushies.
Hawaii, no Hawaiian ice, yeah.
Yeah, in the summer, when the weather gets cool, they close. The landscaping place, when it gets too hot in the summer, they don't want to kill their plants, so they just come in in the spring.
Yeah, yeah. My question would be, I'm sure you guys are gonna be really successful, but if, but if you're not, then what provisions do we have for them vacating that property? Or removing the trailers, removing the temporary structures? And I would want there to be something, if we're going to do that, then say, within 30 days of the business operating ceasing, then those structures would leave the property.
Can we legally do that?
Well, David, didn't you say that by zoning, that these could be, there could be outside storage for that kind of a thing? Did you tell me that?
In the zoning that allows outside storage for them?
If I were gonna park a truck or a trailer, can I do that there?
Well, I think you can use it to park your trucks, yeah.
It would be, but it'd have to be fenced.
To park a vehicle? If I went, a vehicle out?
Well, no, this ain't a vehicle, it's a pre-standing mobile unit, a trailer.
Right.
Like we did with the guys on Innovation, we made them put a fence.
Right, to screen.
Stayed, it would have to be fenced.
And I, you're probably thinking along the lines of site plan requirements, where when you cut off to residential, you want to screen, you know, screen your outside storage.
Yeah. But, I mean, I don't know if that pertains to this, since it's a short period, but, I mean.
We're driving around the parking lot, honestly, so.
Well, yeah, they're along 33, so there's some streetlights there.
I don't know what your timetable is. Are you looking for immediate answer tonight?
No, we're not.
It would seem like that a memorandum of understanding might be drafted by our city attorney that can help put down a few of these understandings. So, we both have a comfort level. And maybe you guys can share what North Kansas City did, although that was in the industrial district, I'm sure.
Yeah, honestly, there was very little city input, believe it or not. They just wanted us to have our inspection in hand, the fire marshal's stamp of approval, and that's really all I had to do.
I hate to be them more laid-back than us.
County Health, right? And so, working with them to really understand that we are, we have our own commissary kitchens. Typically, if you're a mobile unit, you have to lease commissary kitchen space. And they have deemed us a full structure. So, that's been the hardest, is working with the Clay County Health Department. And luckily, because it's still Clay County, everything's still applied.
That was a big hurdle.
Yeah, and I explained to them that the building that sits on that property currently would serve as the commissary for freshwater, electricity disposal. And they were.
Restroom?
Restroom, they were good with all that.
So, would the board feel comfortable with approving subjects to, you know, a memorandum of understanding accepted by our city attorney and applicants? Clause, once a business ceases, they have 30 or 45 days to remove the items from the location?
Hopefully, that doesn't happen first.
Right, yeah.
We want to see this continue to grow and.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, yeah.
And the one thing to just know is timeline-wise, we're set to close on buying the property on July 15th. And so, again, our offer is contingent on maintaining, or obtaining city approval. So, by no means do we need a decision tonight, but.
You don't want to wait till the next meeting, which is the 21st?
Right.
I personally do not have an issue with it. I like the clause that you would like to add to it. I agree with Dan. I do think we've had a couple of things through the years that have gone that year. Most recently, I do think siler was.
Siler was used.
So, I don't think this is way out there for us.
Yeah, we don't want to, whatever we approve, I want it realistic for our applicant, right? I don't want that to be a hurdle while they're trying to grow a business, just have to worry about coming back in and.
Six months to get, to get approval. That's, that's counterproductive for a new business.
Yeah, I think six months is too short.
Yeah.
I'm okay making this a year.
We entertain a motion to approve the exception to Section 505.050, a 12-month approval of the temporary building structure ordinance subject to MOU, drafted by our city attorney and accepted by the applicants, agreeing that if the business would close in 45 days.
Yeah, and authorize the mayor to sign that.
Yeah, close within 45 days, that they would agree to remove the items from the location.
I would like that.
I would gladly do that, except I do not remember all the numbers that you just spouted off.
Shirley, write it down.
Shirley, yes.
I missed that motion, Shirley.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Welcome to Carney.
Congratulations, welcome to Carney.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You gotta have good fried mushrooms, though.
You can.
I don't smoke mushrooms.
I do. Stuff a little sausage. We do have a few more items on the agenda this evening. You, you and your representative are more loving to stay here now is a good time. If you want to excuse yourself.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
See you.
We'll move on to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in five, excuse me, excuse, yes, enclosed in five, or 6A is a proposed ordinance that designates Second Street as a one-way for traffic purposes. And it's related to the development of Ryan's Park. Letters were sent out to residents along Second Street, so they might have the opportunity to comment. Not sure if anyone has joined us by Zoom that might do that. After the public hearings, recommended that the board consider the enclosed ordinance. And this is to make one-way on Second Street so that we can have that nose-in-parking work as we had contemplated.
Right, at this time, I will open the floor for public comment. If you are for or against this proposed ordinance, have you walk up to the podium, speak your name and address for record? Call the floor open. Seeing nobody move, we will close the floor for public comment. Any questions or discussion from the board or report from city staff?
I was just gonna report that I don't think anybody that is online is present for that particular item.
I received no correspondence on the letter myself.
I drove this this weekend just to see this, and I feel this is a great idea.
Given, given the, we're doing angle-in parking, given the direction of the angle-in parking, I think it's really the only option for us.
I did hear from a resident close by that staff made a repair on the yard, you know, construction driving, so that's the only thing I'll do, rather than on Second Street. So, and she appreciated staff taking care of that.
Timeline on the side, just in case this, I need to know that. Have you got them?
I'll try to get them up as soon as you can. That would be before the people get used to it, before the park opens on Friday, they tend to. All right, if we could, I guess we have to pass the ordinance before, don't we? So, if we could read the ordinance by title only or first reading?
An ordinance amending the traffic code designating West Second Street as a one-way street.
Make a question to her first.
Clinton, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, second reading by title only?
An ordinance amending the traffic code designating West Second Street as a one-way street.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, for the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have no old business to discuss this evening. We'll move on to the item underneath this.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed is a proposed ordinance renewing Spire, which is, used to be Missouri Gas Energy Natural Gas franchise. It's a 20-year franchise. The Spire's attorney has signed off on the changes that were proposed by our city attorney, which simply modify their standard agreement to read more like our current agreement. And if you'd like me to read by title only, I can do that. Any questions from the board? If you read the ordinance by title only or first reading. An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri, granting a franchise to operate a natural gas distribution plant and system within the city to Spire Missouri Incorporated.
I make a motion to approve.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, read by, read the ordinance by title for the second reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri, granting a franchise to operate a natural gas distribution plant and system within the city to Spire Missouri Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, for the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. We'll move on to the next item of business. This evening, we do have an executive session notice in accordance with RS MO 610021. The board may go into closed session during this meeting to discuss matters of litigation, legal actions, and/or communication from the city attorney, as provided under Section 610021 Subsection 1, and/or real estate in Subsection 2, and/or employee under section, the same section. If we could entertain a motion to enter in executive session?
So moved?
Please second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll enter in executive session at 7:16 PM. After we convene executive session, we'll return to the public session to finish up our meeting.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt? Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
See you, Bob. All right, we'll get the paperwork.
David, go ahead and mute.
Loud and clear.
Great. We adjourned our executive session at 8:07 PM. At this time, we'll move to Alderman's discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I do have two things. First, I would like to say big thank you to Donnie and the street crew for doing the flags for Memorial Day. It is, it's impressive. And I always get wonderful comments from our citizens about the flags, so.
I got a compliment from Dr. Miller about the flags.
Yeah, they look nice. They look good. And second, didn't get the opportunity after having Eric talk about the splash pad shelter in the cabana, but when I got this on Friday, I questioned some of these, so I did a lot of research. I have contacted numerous areas around here. There are over 30 splash pads in the area. But two of our closer neighbors, Lawson and Liberty, and what they charge for the shelters at their splash pads. Lawson does not charge anything. It is a first come, first served basis. They have a policy that they don't want to exclude any of their residents due to an inability to pay, so for birthday parties, et cetera, that is theirs. Liberty has a policy of the shelters are available free of charge on a first come, first served basis, or if you feel a need to reserve it, it can be reserved for a fee. The reservations, if you reserve one of their shelters, it is for the full day from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that fee, if you are a resident, is $35. If you are a non-resident, it is $55. On a weekend or a holiday, that cost does go up to $60. So those are two. The one that I found that was closest to ours at the $100, and again, it was for the whole day, the whole shelter, and that was Lee's Summit. Howard Park and Lee McKeegan Park North. Those two both are $100 for the 12-hour day from 10:00 to 10:00. So I just kind of, the cost seemed high to me when I got it. That's why I did the research and took the time to make all of these phone calls and connect with all these people. I do think that we do need to charge. It is new. People will respect it more if they have to pay for it. I just maybe think that our rates are a smidge high when our closest neighbors are either free or a third of that price, so.
I have a point to make on that. Lawson's was funded through the sale of their water utility, and I think that they were.
Promised.
Promised that as a gift back to the community. Liberty's was a part of the use tax sale that they had done. And so they've made a deal with their community, I think, a little bit on what they promised to deliver on their use tax. So I would say that there's funding sources for that. We have no such funding source for that.
I don't disagree with you there, but perception is a lot.
Well, the facts are important, though. And as long as we remind people, you know, how they got to be what they are, we would lean on at least some of it, maybe a little bit more for, that's where we got our advice. So anyway.
Do you have anything else to share?
I don't. That's probably more than you wanted to hear.
Thanks for your feedback on that. Alderman Holt?
I really don't have anything. I just know that around town, everybody's pretty excited about, the park getting ready to open. They're excited about the amphitheater season coming back 4th of July. I think it was a smart move to move fireworks back out there. You're watching the town come back to life. It's, you know, they went through some COVID stuff and just the mindset of, hey, we want to do something. And I think you're going to see this year be a really special year.
The week before last, I was at Farmer's Market, and it was packed that Saturday. Yeah, everybody's out. It was a beautiful day. And the Casey's bringing the second Saturday event to the community, which is going to be, you know, another outdoor fun event. So, yeah, it's exciting stuff. Alderman Lehman?
The Lions Park, Lions Park and Splash Pad is really high on people's comments. People that haven't driven by that area in some time drive by it. And I had a comment on, a couple of comments on my Facebook page, it's like capital letters, wow. You know, it's, I think, I think we've delivered the cream of the crop in this, in this park. So, and it's good to see people out and about. You know, I went by Farmer's Market this Saturday, and just, I mean, there are just cars everywhere. And so the other comment, several comments that I got was when the concert schedule got released. People are really, really excited to be able to get back out and hear music and just be normal again. So they're really happy with the concerts and with parks. So kudos to the Parks Department, and people are happy so far.
Yeah, I'm really excited. That North Kansas City Beverage was a generous sponsor again this year, and staff did an amazing job with bringing a good, diverse schedule out there, but extremely affordable prices. And then as Ryan touched on today, I mean, Noe Palma, a free Noe show on the 2nd, it was amazing. Nothing. Alderman Berger?
No, I think the great thing about going last is that the board, my fellow board members usually cover everything by the time you get today, so. I'm not complaining. No, this is fine.
Can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Salute.
Second that.
One favor?
Aye.
We'll adjourn everybody. Thank you.